Will the members and our guests please take their seats? This meeting will now come to order. As all members have received a copy of the call of tonight's meeting, the reading of the call will be omitted. Will everyone please rise and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Welcome to the October meeting of the Greenwich Representative Town Meeting. My name is Tom Byrne, RTM Moderator. As all members have received a copy of the minutes of our September 18 meeting, the reading of those minutes will be omitted. Are there any proposed changes to those minutes? Hearing none and absent objection, the minutes as submitted stand adopted upon unanimous David Detchin, Chair of our Labor Contracts Committee, has asked for an opportunity to address us tonight. Mr. Detchin.
Mr. Moderator, fellow members of the RTM. John Eddy, who's Chairman of the Appointments Committee, thought it would be a good idea if I explained why the Appointments Committee and the RTM are devoting some attention to nominating and electing members of the 2016-2017 Labor Contracts Committee when we're only days away from the end of the '16-'17 term. Right now, we have five members on the RTM. Three of those are regular members, and two of them are alternates. We normally would have five regular members and two alternates, so that there's always five official votes. But we have two vacancies among the regular members. One is due, of course, to the passing of Joan Caldwell, who was on the Labor Contracts Committee from the very time, from its very inception. And the other vacancy is due to the fact that Mike Watzek had to resign from the RTM because he was appointed to retirement, and that required him to disassociate himself from the RTM. What we have coming up here in this last quarter of 2017 are two nominations. One is Rob Pirelli Minetti, and he's on tonight's call if it doesn't get postponed. And then there's also the nomination and election of Josh Brown, who will be on the December call. Now, some of you may be scratching your heads and wondering why in the world are we electing people to Labor Contracts Committee when we're going to have an election in a few days to elect folks for the 18-19 term of the RTM and therefore have a new Labor Contracts Committee? There's two reasons why we do this. One is that the Labor Contracts Committee is a so-called special committee of the RTM. It's not like the standing committees, such as Finance, BOC, or the like, which are members from various districts. The special committee members are nominated by the Appointments Committee and elected by the RTM. What that means is that the members of the current Labor Contracts Committee, each member, as long as that member is re-elected for the 18-19 term, will continue to serve on the Labor Contracts Committee even into the next term until such time as the new Labor Contracts Committee is constituted. And that usually takes place at our March or April meeting, just before we have our budgetary meeting in May. So folks who are on the Labor Contracts Committee now or during this term will continue to serve into the next term. That allows us to have continuity, and so we don't have a gap where there's literally no Labor Contracts Committee at all. The second reason for electing folks at this time is because there's a good likelihood that we will have a number of labor contract issues come up here, either in the December meeting, the January meeting, or the March meeting. It's not clear when, but it's quite possible that we may have some labor contract issues which the LCC would need to consider and which the RTM may well want to vote on. And let me just quickly indicate what those are. First of all, we have the Teamsters Arbitration. You'll recall that the RTM rejected the Teamsters Contract earlier in this term on the recommendation of the BOC. And that has gone into arbitration, and in fact, the town decided to use many of the arguments that the BOC had put forth to justify rejecting the contract. They used those arguments within the arbitration. So we're waiting to see how that particular award comes down and what it says. Because of that, we also have out there contracts with the two Launa Collective Bargaining Units and the Nurses Union, which were supposed to have been negotiated earlier this year. But we put them into arbitration but didn't appoint a hearing with the understanding of Launa and the Nurses, because we're all going to wait to see what comes down on the Teamsters Arbitration. And the results and the reasoning of the Teamsters Arbitration will then influence what will be the agreement with the two Launa units and the Nurses. And those should be, in fact, negotiated fairly quickly once the Teamsters come down. We also have a Fireman's Arbitration, which has been in the internal arbitration. It's been going on forever, and it's actually been two arbitrations. We had an initial arbitration about a particular aspect of whether some particular point was in fact arbitrateable at all, you know, was entitled to negotiation or was a purely management issue. The town lost that arbitration, but now we're arbitrating the specific substantive issue. We're waiting for that award to come down. Finally, there is floating out there a negotiation with the Police Union. The town has taken a fairly hard line on a number of issues, including the question of whether there should be a DC defined contribution retirement plan in order to begin phasing out the defined benefit plan. And there certainly is the distinct possibility that that negotiation might go into arbitration. If that were to go into arbitration, I'm fairly confident that that would not be resolved before the new Labor Contracts Committee would be constituted during the course of '18. So because we have this continuity and because we want to be ready to address some issues that could come up here in the first quarter of '18, we are in fact going ahead and considering these two nominations to the Labor Contracts Committee. If Rob's nomination were to be postponed tonight, then both of the nominations would be considered and presumably voted on at our December meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Was there anyone else who had requested an opportunity to address some administrative matter? All right. That brings us to our call. I did alert our district and committee chairs that based upon the reports received, I would recommend the following organization of tonight's agenda items. Items seven and 14 will be placed on the Consent Calendar, absent objection, and items one through six will be combined for voting purposes, leaving to be considered separately items eight through 13 and item 15. So at this point, I will now designate the following two items for our Consent Calendar. The first is item seven. It is a resolution approving the sublease between the Greenwich Garden Education Center and the Greenwich Tree Conservancy for part of the west wing of the former mansion owned by the town and located within Montgomery Pineetum Park. The second item that I will place on our Consent Calendar is item 14, and this is a resolution approving a street change name, that part of Delavan Avenue, I'm sorry, that part of New Lebanon Avenue, from Delavan to Wessels Place, which is a distance of 300 feet, will be renamed Veterans Way. Is there any objection to the designation of those two items for our Consent Calendar? Hearing none, will the district chairs please mark your voting cards, Consent Calendar items seven and 14, and proceed to poll your delegation? All right. The recommendation is to combine items one through six for voting purposes. That requires a motion to suspend the rules. Is there such a motion? It has been moved and seconded to suspend the rules to combine items one through six for voting purposes. That motion to suspend the rules is not debatable, and it requires a two-thirds majority to pass. All those in favor of suspending the rules and combining items one through six, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion has carried. So we will now begin with the first of those six combined items. Yes, Mr. Tuthill, District Four. Mr. Tuthill, why don't you come forward? And while Mr. Tuthill is coming forward, I want to point out that anticipating there may be some extended discussion of items 11 and 15, there are sign-up sheets. I believe Mr. Tuthill is about to make a motion to limit debate. And if you want to try and preserve your right to speak, I will do what I can to protect those who sign up on those sign-up sheets. There are some on the table before the entrance and some at the front of the hall. Mr. Tuthill.
Mr. Moderator, I move that debate at this meeting be limited to three minutes per person, per item, with the exception of the principal proponent and principal opponent to be determined by the moderator.
And the time for those?
Excuse me, sir?
Did you mention the -- no, 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 he has a motion. You didn't mention how much time for the principal proponent and opponent.
Five minutes for the principal proponent and opponent. I'm sorry, sir.
All right. Is there a second?
A second.
It has been moved and seconded to limit debate for the entire meeting tonight to three minutes per person, per item, with the exception that the principal proponent and opponent to be determined by the moderator would be entitled to five minutes. Is that correct?
Correct.
All right. That is a procedural matter. I will call for a voice vote. All those in favor of Mr. Tuthill's motion to limit debate, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion has carried. All right, so for the duration of the meeting, that three-minute limit will be in effect. All right. Item number one was postponed from our September meeting, so that is now before us. I will read that and place it before us. This is a resolution -- wait, whoa, 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 I'm sorry. Do we have a substitute on this? I thought I was told that while this talks about appointing someone to be a member, that it's really an alternate position? All right. All right, so what I will put before you is a resolution, this is a substitute resolution, to appoint Marie Williams to be an alternate member of the Historic District Commission for a term expiring March 31, 2022. That is now before the body. May we have the reports of the committees that consider this? Peter Berg, Chair of our Land Use Committee.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, fellow members. The Land Use Committee interviewed Marie Williams at its meeting in September. Our vote on Ms. Williams was 10-0-0 with two districts absent. Marie Williams has been an alternate on the board for the past three years and worked extensively on the neighbor-to-neighbor building project at Christ Church where she is a member. She has a passion for architecture, but appreciates the complexities of maintaining historic homes. She expressed interest in working with planning and zoning as well as the realty industry to find programs that the town could support that would encourage preservation of historic homes such as tax benefits or zoning variances. In addition, she believes more communication should be done with the realty industry so that owners and potential buyers are aware of not just the limitation of historic designation, but also the flexibility and changes permitted. So people would be encouraged to maintain the historic future of housing.
Mr. Berg, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but Chief Engineer Conway has informed me that for some reason we have a different mic tonight. I'd ask our speakers, does that come out? And can you hold it closer to your mouth? All right. Mr. Conway, is that better?
Yes.
Okay.
Again, our vote was 10-0-0. I'd be happy to repeat that whole thing.
Okay. Bad timing on my part. Thank you. John Eddy, Chair of our Appointments Committee.
The Appointments Committee vote on Ms. Williams was 10-0-0 with districts three and ten absent.
Thank you. Discussion on item one. Item two now comes before us. Mr. Eddy, Chair of our Appointments Committee, with that resolution.
Be resolved that Committee on Aging will change its name to the Commission on Aging effective immediately, and the resolution establishing the Committee on Aging, which was adopted by action of the Representative Town Meeting on February 10, 1975, as for item eight found in Book 13 on pages 277 and 278 of the Archives of the Minutes of the Representative Town Meeting shall be amended by replacing the second paragraph of the resolution with the following. And then the content of the following is lengthy. It is as it appears on the call with some changes that will -- I think there's no changes at all on this one. Is that my turn?
All right, so we'll --
No changes, yes.
We'll have to make that amendment. So this is currently as it appears on the call. Will a member please -- so that has been presented by one of our committees. It does not require a second and is now before us. May we hear the committee reports on this item? Alexis Vulgaris, Chair of our Health and Human Services Committee.
Good evening. Health and Human Services met last Tuesday. John Eddy and Steve Katz, the current Vice Chair of what we have been calling for 42 years, the Commission on Aging, is actually the Committee on Aging. So we were really addressing the name change. Apparently, we've been wrong for years regarding the name of this committee. On February 10, 1975, the RTM adopted a resolution establishing the Committee on Aging. And rather quickly thereafter, on June 19, 1975, the committee had their first organizational meeting, and they adopted the name, the Commission on Aging. And ever since, we've been calling it the Commission on Aging. So we've been wrong for 42 years. So tonight, we have an opportunity to fix that and make it officially the Commission on Aging. And I'd like to publicly acknowledge the diligent work of John Eddy, who was the first person in 42 years to notice and bring to our attention this error. So any place that the Committee on Aging appears in official town documents, the town charter, code ordinances, will be changed to the Commission on Aging. And in addition to the name change, the staggered term limits, both for years and month, that the Appointments Committee has been working on, will also apply to the paragraphs that he just described. Our vote was 8-0-0 with districts one, four, five, and 10 absent. Thank you.
Thank you. Doug Wells, Chair of our Legislative and Rules Committee.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, we took up this item last Monday evening. John Eddy also presented to our committee. These changes to the municipal code sections are similar to the amendments to the flood and control erosion appointment process that were adopted at our last meeting, and we'll have another round of these in December regarding the charter amendments that will be made to correct the other appointment process and to spread out the appointments to the different agencies that we deal with. We noted one striver's error, one change of language that we recommended, which is in subsection E in the third paragraph, there is a phrase there that is in the third line that says, "the agenda and the minutes of the RTM meeting." We deleted the word "agenda" and inserted in its place the word "call." Our vote as the legal order on this item was, as amended, was 10-0-0 with districts one and nine absent, and on the merits, the same vote, 10-0-0.
All right, so you're making a motion to amend this by changing "agenda" to "call."
Yes.
All right, any objection to that motion to amend offered by Legislative and Rules? Hearing none, it is adopted upon unanimous consent. Mr. Eddy, did you also have a change to that?
No.
All right. Discussion on item two. Item three now comes before --
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Bergweger.
The Legislative Rules Committee, there's R1 in several places. We think it's R3 out of 45, I think.
I was thinking, Mr. Bergweger is correct. That's why he's the MVP of the Legislative Rules Committee. Doesn't let me make any mistakes. So under the section beginning Designation of Commission Positions, we'll note that in paragraphs R3 through R7, in the body of each one of those, it says R1. It should change so it corresponds with the number of paragraphs. So the first one, for example, R3, the current terms of regular member should be not R1, R3. Same thing for four, five, six, and seven. Change the number in the second R to reflect the number at the beginning of the paragraph.
Thank you. Again, any objection to that? That may be adopted upon unanimous consent. Any further comments on item two? Item three now comes before us. John Eddy.
Item three, be resolved that Chapter 2A, Alarm Devices, comma, Chapter 2A dash, Alarm Devices, comma, Section 2 dot 4, Alarm Appeal Board of the Code Of Ordinances of the Town shall be amended by replacing said Section 2 with the following. And then there's the changes as they appear in the call, with the exception that for items three, four, five, and six, the formatting came off kilter in the call because the outlining of each section flows from the first one when it was put into the call. So these changes will be addressed by Legislative Rules. Yeah, can I say?
Okay. I just noticed sometimes we call it Alarm Appeal Singular Board and others Alarm Appeals. Is this the Alarm Appeals Board? With an S or no S?
I think it's Alarm Appeal Board. Am I right?
I'm sorry, with the S or with a --
And Section 248, it says in one place, it says Alarm Appeal, then it says Alarm Appeals, then it says Alarm Appeal. I would say let's vote for two out of three. No, I'll --
Mr. Tessie, do you know?
I'm relatively certain, Mr. Moderator, it's Alarm Appeal Board.
Singular.
Singular.
Okay.
Or it will be now.
So whatever it is, well, let's just say, whatever it is, we'll make that change. Okay. All right. Committee reports on this. Doug Wells, Chair of our Legislative and Rules.
So the same change in two that we made with respect to the issue of agenda being deleted and call put in its place appears in three, four --
I'm sorry, hang on a minute. Is there someone to ask? Mr. Tuthill? You cannot hear? Is it possible to pick that up and hold it?
I'll get a little closer to it. Is that better?
I'm sorry, Mr. Conway?
Please talk directly into the mic or over to your mouth.
Yes, sir.
Okay. The same change we made in item two, we also made in three, four, five, and six, which is in each case where the word "agenda" appears before Representative Town Meeting, we changed the call. Beyond that, as Mr. Eddy did note, there was formatting issues when this item three and through six were presented, so the numbering and lettering got messed up. But what we did is that we sent out corrected version, came to Legislative Rules Committee Chair, and then I in turn sent it to the district via all the respective Legislative Rules members, so all of you should have a corrected version. There are no other changes in three through five. There are some changes in six.
Changes in section F? Oh, sorry. Can this be changed?
Are there any substantive changes?
No.
All right, then we are going to authorize you to work with the Clerk's Office on the minutes to get the formatting as it should be.
Yes.
All right, if it's not a substantive change, we're not going to worry about it tonight.
No, we're all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vote on this and all the others was the same, 10-0-0.
Thank you. John Mistracchio, giving the report, Vice Chair of our Town Services Committee.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, Town Services met last week, and for voting purposes, we combined items three and four. We were joined by John Eddy, who also served double duty as a representative of District Eight. Not surprisingly, he voted in favor of this along with other other members. We voted 12-0-0 on items three and four.
Thank you. Discussion on item three. Item four now comes before us. Mr. Eddy, with that resolution.
Item four, be resolved that Chapter 2, Administration, comma, Article 2, period, dash, Code of Ethics, comma, Section 2 dash 11, Word of Ethics, semicolon, Membership, semicolon, Term, semicolon, Vacancy of the Code Of Ordinances shall be amended by replacing said Section 211 with the following. Appears with the changes.
Same as it appears on the call. Thank you.
With the changes that --
Right. No substantive -- well, yes, that "agenda to call" and formatting. Mr. Wells, anything further on this?
No, the vote is the same on three through six.
Thank you. And Mr. Mistracchio gave us his vote, the Town Services vote. Thank you. Discussion on item four. Item five now comes before us. Mr. Eddy?
Item five, be resolved that Chapter 6, Land Use, comma, Article 5, dash, Historic District, comma, Section 6 dash 309, Historic District Commission, Section 6 dash 309, through Section 310 of the Code Of Ordinances of the Town, shall be amended by replacing said Sections 309 and 310 with the following, as appears.
Thank you. All right, so Legislative and Rules, same report. Okay, and land use on this one. Peter Berg, Chair of the Land Use Committee.
So land use took this up last Monday night. John Eddy presented the item. He noted that the staggered terms that are being proposed here are aimed at preserving the institutional memory of the Historic District Commission. Our vote on this item was 11-0-0, District 11 absent.
Thank you. Discussion on item five. Item six now comes before us. Mr. Eddy, with that resolution.
Mr. Moderator, I have an amendment to the resolution that was not covered by Legislative Rules. Item number six, be resolved that Chapter 2, Administration, comma, Article 6, colon, Inland Wetlands and Watercourses Agency, comma, Section 220, that's where a change will be made, of the Code Of Ordinances of the Town, shall be amended by replacing Sections 220 and 221 with the following, section, and then as it reads. So the addition here is, the change is not just Section 220, but Sections 220 and 221.
Is it still Watercourses, one word?
What's your -- yes. Watercourses is one word.
That's in memory of Bill Clark, for anybody who may have been around. All right, and Mr. Berg, Land Use Committee report.
So when the Land Use Committee took this up, Mr. Eddy again explained that having staggered terms preserves the institutional memory of the inland, wetlands, watercourses
staggered terms preserves the institutional memory of the Inland Wetlands Watercourses Agency. Our vote was 11-0, District 11 absent.
Thank you. Discussion on item 6. All right, will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Combined items, substitute 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and substitute 6, and please proceed to poll your delegation. I have the results of the vote on the consent calendars. Those were Items 7 and 14. Those in favor, 178; opposed, zero; abstaining, zero. The consent calendar items have carried. Item 8 now comes before us. May we have the resolution on that? That's John Eddy again. The Rob Perelli Minetti nomination and appointment?
Item 8, resolve that the following named person nominated by the Appointments Committee, the appointed member of the Labor Contracts Committee for term expiring 12/31/17, Carl Rob Perelli Minetti.
All right, well, that—we apparently have technical difficulties. There are reports that no sound is coming through, so hopefully that can be resolved. That's not—apparently it's not related to how close you hold that, because they're not hearing anything. All right, so you just presented this resolution, Mr. Eddy?
Yes, Mr. Moderator.
All right. Being offered on behalf of our Appointments Committee, it does not require a second and is currently before us. May we have the reports of the committees? Mr. Eddy?
At this meeting on June 6, your Appointments Committee took up the question of whether and how to fill the vacancy of the Labor Contracts Committee left by the passing of Joan Caldwell earlier this year. Mr. Detchin did a good job of explaining why we chose to fill the vacancy at this point in time. But in discussing how to move ahead in filling the vacancy, the committee— in discussing how to move ahead, the committee discussed a strategy of elevating one of the two alternate members and then choosing from a pool of new candidates to fill the newly vacated alternate position. After a prolonged discussion, however, the committee chose unanimously to open the regular member position to all candidates, citing what it perceived as a disconnect between the Labor Contracts Committee and the RTM, and the need for better communication from the Labor Contracts Committee in informing and advising the RTM, something that Mr. Detchin addressed this evening very well, in my opinion. A call for candidates went out to the RTM at the June meeting with a deadline of July 15 for interviews with the Appointments Committee on August 22. Because of an error by the Appointments Committee Chair in the publishing of the Agenda, the committee was unable to take action to nominate under the guidelines set in the Freedom of Information Act. Given the delay, the Appointments Committee moved the next meeting to September 26, and the committee reopened the call for candidates. The nomination had taken place on August 22, Rob Perelli Minetti, the only candidate. Mr. Eddy was not a fan of the non-gracious and second-class candidates. So, your appointments being met on September—
All right, should we turn that mic off?
Am I making this noise?
[inaudible]
Thank you, thank you very much. All right. So, I forgot where I stopped, where I left off.
Freedom of information.
Right. Okay, so if the nomination had taken place on August 22, Rob Perelli Minetti would have been the only candidate. Mr. Perelli Minetti was nothing if not gracious in accepting the delay and the call for new candidates. So, your appointments committee met on September 26 to nominate and then fill this regular position vacancy from among four candidates. Now I think it's too loud. Those four candidates, how's this?
Good.
Okay. Those four candidates were Joshua Brown from District 8, John Dolan from District 7, Daniel Azizmir from District 5, and Mr. Perelli Minetti from District 12. Unlike a typical committee voting, which serves to provide a non-binding advisory opinion to the RTM, the vote to nominate is binding, and no member is asked to explain his or her vote. This being said, however, the primary issue of concern expressed both by the members of the Appointments Committee and the candidates was the need for improved communication between the RTM and the Labor Contracts Committee. Balloting took place to choose a candidate who would—and the candidate needed to receive both the most votes and a majority. No majority was reached in the first two rounds, where the candidates with the lowest vote—candidates with the lowest vote totals were removed from running before moving on to the next ballot. Mr. Perelli Minetti received eight of 12 votes in the third round. Point of information, it was not until after this meeting that the Chair of the Appointments Committee was made aware that another vacancy had occurred on the Labor Contracts Committee when Mr. Wacheck resigned from the RTM on August 29. Mr. Perelli Minetti's platform, so to speak, was summarized on his candidate information form, which did not find its way into this meeting's explantos. So, I will quote for them—from them here, so you have the benefit of understanding where he was coming from. "My interest in the Labor Contracts Committee has grown out of my work on the RTM and the Finance Committee." These are Mr. Perelli Minetti's words. "I believe my expertise in contract law and negotiation, as well as a graduate background in economics, and my long-term interest in the welfare of the town of Greenwich, and its fiscal stability and sustainability will be very helpful on the Labor Contracts Committee. I believe the Labor Contracts Committee needs to broaden its focus beyond the very technical approach it has taken to see contracts as a whole in the context of the larger town fiscal picture. The Connecticut fiscal crisis has brought to attention the importance and impact of labor contracts have on government's fiscal solvency and sustainability. I have been serving eight years on the Finance Committee analyzing and voting on town and Board of Educational Labor Agreements, and have developed broad and deep knowledge of town departments. I think the time is right to get involved earlier in the analysis and decision process of labor contracts as a member of the Labor Contracts Committee. I believe in bringing—我相信我带来一个补足技能的团队，因为目前LCC只有一个 attorney." Mr. Perelli Minetti is a principal at Singer Anner and Perelli Minetti LLP, a boutique law firm located on West Putnam Avenue in Greenwich, and he has over 35 years' experience in corporate law. He has a JD from UCLA. He served as a deacon in the First Congregational Church, and he is a member of the Sound Beach Community Band. This is Mr. Perelli Minetti's fourth turn on the RTM with District 12. Thank you. Mike Warner, Chair of our Finance Committee.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator and fellow members. This item came up last week on Monday. Unfortunately, Rob was absent, and he had a personal matter and was not able to attend. Therefore, we did not take this matter up. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion on item 8. Mr. Dolan, there's no motion to postpone. So, do you want to speak on item 8?
No.
Okay. Discussion on item 8. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Item number 8, and proceed to poll your delegation. Item number 9 now comes before us. May we have the resolution on that item?
Mr. Brown is here.
Here he comes. Alan Brown, Director of Nathaniel Witherall.
Hi, good evening, everyone. As Mr. Moderator said, I'm Alan Brown. I'm the Executive Director at Nathaniel Witherall. Just a matter of business, do you want me to read the whole resolution?
No, no, just summarize it.
All right, this is a resolution for a total amount of $377,000, $200,000 of which will be reimbursed to the town by the Friends of Nathaniel Witherall from existing funds that were raised and are on account, leftover from Project Renew. The project is to renovate the four long-term skilled nursing floors in the tower section of our building, which includes all of the long-term care beds, 156 beds in total. The renovations will—
So, that's the same, there's no changes to this—
No changes to this.
Thank you very much. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item 9 has been moved and seconded. Alexis Vulgaris, Chair of our Health and Human Services Committee.
Good evening. Alan Brown, Executive Director of Witherall, presented this item to our committee last Tuesday. Witherall is seeking $377,000 appropriation to cover renovation costs associated with the common area spaces located in the tower portion of the facility. And I'll just give you a follow-up to what Alan said. So, the 88 patient rooms located in the tower facility were fully renovated during Project Renew, but the common area parts of the facility were not. And the common areas consist of hallways, reception spaces, living and dining room areas, bathroom, shower room, and a tub room. And pictures of what these spaces look like are currently up on our website. Ceiling tiles are damaged and discolored, wallpapers ripped and faded, carpeting is threadbare, decor is worn, and the general space shows heavy wear and tear. In addition to wanting to make the space—make sure that the facility looks clean and welcoming for patients and their families, the tower portion is also the part of the facility that long-term private pay residents reside in. So, currently, those residents pay $16,000 a month for services privately, for as long as they're there. So, one of the chief goals for Witherall has been to grow their private pay long-term care population, but it's hard to attract wealthy residents when the common area space is so rundown and shabby. In fiscal year 2016, the town appropriated the $950,000 for the renovation project. And from the time the money was approved for appropriation to the time the RFPs went out and the town issued three bids for this project in order to secure the lowest bid, the economic recovery caught up with the building trades and construction costs were higher. So, the lowest bid came in at $1,327,000, or a difference of $377,000. Friends of Nathaniel Witherall had previously raised $200,000 for Project Renew and has agreed to support the additional cost of renovation. Upon RTM approval, the Friends of Witherall will give the town $200,000. So, while we are initially approving a $377,000 appropriation, the net cost to the town is actually $177,000. Our vote was 11-0 with District 1 absent. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Warner, Chair of our Finance Committee.
Good evening, fellow members. Our discussion centered on what you just heard. And as a result, our vote was 8-0, with District 7 abstaining because he wanted more time to reflect on the concerns that had been raised. That's my report.
Thank you. Discussion on item 9. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Item number 9, and proceed to poll your delegation. I do have the result of the vote on the combined items. Those were Items 1 through 6. Those in favor, 184; opposed, zero; abstaining, zero. The combined items have carried. All right, we are proceeding in numerical order here, so I note that Item 11 is in line. So, anyone who wanted to get their name on the list, this will be the last call. Item 10 now comes before us. Peter Tessie, our first selectman.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen of the RTM. Item number 10, to consider an act upon the following resolution requested by the first selectman and approved by the Board of Selectmen, resolve that the representative town meeting consider enacting an ordinance adopting the Town of Greenwich Harbor Management Plan August 2017, final draft for town adoption, prepared by the Town of Greenwich Harbor Management Commission in accordance with Sections 22A dash 113K, comma, etc. of the Connecticut General Statutes, and the remainder as it appears on the call.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item 10 has been moved and seconded. Who would like to—Doug Wells with the Legislative and Rules Committee report.
Our committee took up this item last Monday evening. We're assisted by Lyle Gibbons, Vice Chair of the Harbor Management Commission, as well as Frank Maza, current member and former Chair of the Commission, and by Amina Ahmad of the Law Department. Ms. Gibbons gave us some historical perspective on the process in which it took them to put together the plan, which has been ongoing for three years. They met with 50 individuals, held public meetings that were open to the public, submitted the Harbor Management Plan to the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, whose comments were incorporated into the plan, is also approved by the Board of Selectmen and the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection and the Connecticut Port Authority. The reason for adopting this plan is to protect the town's home rule jurisdiction over its harbor area. One of the benefits of this plan will be that we will now, going forward, be able to nominate three people to be harbor master, and the governor will be in a situation where he will be forced to pick among the three that we select rather than the governor selecting who he chooses. We also heard from Legislative and Rules Committee Member Horst Tebby, who is the RTM's representative on the Commission, and he was a strong supporter of this plan. Ms. Ahmad stated that the plan will be reviewed annually and can be revised annually if necessary. She said that the Harbor Management Plan was in legal order. She characterized the plan as being a policy document, not a how-to manual. There will be regulations that are written by the Commission over the next several months to put this plan into place. The committee took votes both as to legal order and the merits. The vote was the same, 10-0 with Departments 1 and 9 absent.
Thank you. Peter Berg, Chair of our Land Use Committee.
Land use had heard from Lyle Gibbons and Frank Maza. Lyle as Vice Chair of the Harbor Management Commission, Frank Maza, former Chair and current member of the Commission. Ms. Gibbons noted that the underlying rationale for the plan is to maintain home rule, thereby enabling the town to have a say in matters relating to the harbor. However, she noted that the plan would not materially change the way business was done regarding issues related to the harbor. Mr. Maza informed us that even though most of the farms in Greenwich have long gone, we still have a 4,000-acre farm. It's underwater and is harvested every year for shellfish. He discussed the dredging of the town's three channels. Myenas River was dredged last year. Greenwich Harbor will be next up, and then finally Byram. The dredging of the Greenwich Harbor is problematic because funding will have to be found. We talked about mooring fees. It was noted that fees have been set by the Board of Selectmen at $75. To date, some $200,000 has been collected and is in a dedicated fund. While it was initially thought that the fund could contribute to the cost of dredging, it's been acknowledged that the amount is far too small, noting that the existing mooring system has been taken down. The goal is to establish a new online system. Harbor Master Ian McMillan was present in the audience. He noted that his job has been made difficult by not having an office or access to email. The members of the Commission noted that these issues were partly explained by the fact that Mr. McMillan is a State of Connecticut appointee and not a town employee. The vote of the Land Use Committee was 11-0, District 11 absent.
Thank you. Andrew Chapin, Chair of our Parks and Recreation Committee.
Parks and Rec took this up. Lyle Gibbons, Casey McKee, and Joe Cecianno were in attendance. There was no opposition to this matter. It is about home rule and moving forward. The committee voted 12-0.
Thank you. Discussion on item 10. Horst Tebby, who is an ex-officio member of the Commission, who represents the RTM on the Commission.
Good evening.
Good evening. As your ex-officio member, I'm tasked with letting you know about significant developments at the Commission. This is my report and recommendation. The Harbor Management Plan before us has been approved by the Board of Selectmen, as you heard, the State of Connecticut, Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, the Connecticut Port Authority, and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. If it is approved by us today, it takes effect immediately. It's not cast in concrete, but can be amended annually with the same approvals as the original plan. In observing and evaluating the development of this plan for the last 14 months, I believe the motivation of the drafters has been to preserve, as much as is possible in the current regulatory environment, our ability to manage our harbors as we find in the best interests of the citizens of the town. Such rights, as you have probably heard, were first given to the town by the state legislature in the Special Acts 28893 of 1949 and 1955. Chapter 444A of the Connecticut Harbor Management Act enacted in the early 1980s and then amended in recent years established the need for a Harbor Management Commission and was seen by many as severely limiting our ability to manage our harbors. Usually that's called home rule. In my view, quite the opposite is the case. If we really want to manage our harbors, then enactment of the Harbor Management Plan is essential. Once enacted, all parties at all levels of government in the state must act in accordance with the plan. We must, the state-appointed harbor master must, and the state agencies must. Now, the plan is a statement of policy. It is not a set of regulations. While some have argued for more specifics in the plan, this omission is by design. As it stands, enabling regulations can be developed and amended under the plan without the long approval processes necessary for changing the plan itself. The first of these regulations, the mooring regulations, are available in draft form on the Harbor Management Commission webpages-
Mr. Tebby, I forgot to remind you that you only have three minutes total, so you have 30 seconds left.
Others will follow. In addition, various subcommittees of HMC have been formed to manage various aspects. Given these considerations, I strongly recommend that you approve the plan. In the current regulatory environment, it is the best available way to preserve our ability to manage our harbors for the benefits of all our citizens and visitors. Thank you.
Right on the dot. Thank you.[784.91][784.91](APPLAUSE). All right. Mr. Angie Alillo, Chair of the Harbor Management Commission, you would be the principal proponent, so you have five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Members of the RTM, friends and neighbors, I will not repeat the reports of the three committees or the excellent presentation by one of our ex-officio members, Mr. Horst Tebby. But let me offer a few words of the who, what, where, and why of the process to remind us where we came from, where we are now, and what we're asking you to do. Firstly, the who. The Harbor Management Commission is comprised of nine of our neighbors, seven members and two alternates. Seven of them are here tonight. They bring a range of knowledge and experience that has informed our work. We also have 10 ex-officio members representing the various interests that you would expect on our Commission. All have been actively involved. The second, the what. On September 16, 2013, you adopted 7A of the town code, which created us. And we were charged with, as one of our first tasks, with drafting a Harbor Management Plan for your consideration. Now, this is pursuant to the Connecticut Harbor Management Act, and a specific intent of that state act was, and I'm quoting, "to increase the authority and control local governments over matters pertaining to the use, management, and conditions of their harbors." Now, we've been charged with drafting this plan, but it only becomes effective after four steps. First, the Harbor Management Commission adopts it. Second, it is presented and accepted by the Board of Selectmen. Third, it is presented to the State of Connecticut and the agency which reviews it is the DEEP, the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. And lastly, it is adopted by this body, and we are asking for you to do that tonight. The third is where. Both where we've been and where we are now. We held our initial meeting in April of 2014, and while it's taken a long time, I think it's fair to say that we wanted to try to get it right. We published our first plan in the fall, November of 2015, nearly two years ago, and we held a public meeting to take your feedback. That resulted in six months of further work and a revised version of the draft, which was presented to the Selectmen in March of 2016. Thereafter, with their authorization, we gave it to the State of Connecticut for its initial review. We then spent the next six months, after having a public meeting, of meeting one-on-one with various government officials, interested private citizens, state officials, the Coast Guard, the Army Corps of Engineers, and anyone else who was interested. And as many of you will recall, we had a standing Thursday table at Sweet Pea in Old Greenwich, that's not a plug, where people could come in and talk to us one-on-one because we found that some people felt that an open public setting was not the most conducive to them sharing their private concerns and their insights about the plan. After all that was done, we had a second public meeting in November of 2016, nearly a year ago. We obtained additional feedback and then held a comment period open until December the 1st of last year. At that point, we took those additional comments, revised the draft one more time, and voted in December of last year. And unanimously, the Harbor Management Commission approved that draft. We presented it to the Board of Selectmen thereafter, who unanimously voted to authorize us to present it to the state.
One minute remaining.
The state then spent six months negotiating with us over the final language, which resulted in their approval on August the 21st this past summer. Thereafter, to be procedurally pristine, we revoted as a Commission, and the Board of Selectmen did as well. The last point that I want to raise, because I'm going to run out of time, is the why. You've heard that the Harbor Management Plan will protect and enhance Greenwich's home rule. I want to point out it does two ways. One, it reaffirms the integrity of the Special Acts, which are unique to Greenwich and which are precious. The second is that we have language in this plan that none of the other 22 towns who already have plans was able to negotiate. And that reflects, in no small part, the commitment of the Commission and also the efforts of the Chairman of the Subcommittee, Lyle Gibbons. In our plan, we have language to the effect that with respect to recommendations that the Commission makes to the state on matters that they regulate, if our recommendations are pursuant to the plan and consistent with the plan, they are obligated, unless they can show manifest good cause why, to go otherwise, to follow what we tell them to do. And that is very important with respect to matters governing our harbors, including such matters as docks. Lastly, as the plan lays out, I would just like to note that with respect to how the document is set up, we have identified eight immediate Harbor Management priority issues that we're going to address. We've also set forth a variety of goals and policies that are both specific to certain areas in the town as well as more general. As I say, it's been a long process, but we're very pleased to come to you to report that it has been unanimously supported by our Commission, by the Board of Selectmen, approved by the State of Connecticut, and we thank you for the opportunity to be of service to the town.
Thank you. Our Harbor Master, Ian McMillan.
Good evening, everyone. Oh, boy. Just offhand, would anybody who has a boat or uses the water in Greenwich, please raise your hand? Thank you. That's terrific. So you can understand how important this is. It's really the first time that Greenwich has taken a look at their coastline, which, under some considerations, is about 28 miles of the wealthiest coastline in the world. It's about time we had a plan. Maybe it's about time we've had quite a few plans. And in that sense, I think that this is the best we've done ever. But this is not really a plan. This is a set of policies. At best, it's a plan to plan. And it's worth every one of you who thinks that boating is valuable to take a look at. It's posted online. Take a look at it and try to imagine what it means. What they're trying to do here is to shove something down your throat that you may not be able to swallow and you don't know it. We live in an incredible place. And what I mean by incredible is it's hard to believe how magnificent this coastline is. And not only that, but we're protected by the First Amendment, so we can say whatever we want about it. It could be true. It could be false. But we will die protecting each other so that you can say what you want. And I'll tell you, I've heard a lot. But I've heard a lot from some people I treasure as much as anything alive today. I have a funny look at the people that I deal with. I see them all about 91% water. And as a harbor master, I have a chore to deal with the waters of Greenwich, Connecticut. I'm a state official, which means I enjoy a certain amount of sovereignty, immunity, to protect my ability to meet my duties. So what I want to say to you is, I do have to correct a couple of things. We have 5,500 acres of shellfish beds, not 4,000.
30 seconds.
And we have basically two federal waters in Greenwich. The one that we just remedied with the dredge in the Myanis River, and the other is Greenwich Harbor. That's really why I do what I do. I have a bumper sticker here. It says, "If you dig boating in Greenwich, dredge." If you'd like one, I've got quite a few. Thank you very much.
Further discussion on item 10. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards, item number 10, and proceed to poll your delegation? I have the results of the vote on item 8, the appointment of Rob Pirelli Minetti to the Labor Contracts Committee. Those in favor, 173. Opposed, 3. Abstaining, 7. That item has carried. I have the result of the vote on item 9, the appropriation for Nathaniel Witherell. Those in favor, 176. Opposed, 5. Abstaining, 1. That item has carried. All right. Item 11 now comes before us. Peter Bernstein, Member of the Board of Education.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, members. Item 11, the item is as it appears before you on the call.
All right. And this is a sense of the meeting resolution, asking the RTM to release the conditions regarding the New Lebanon Building Project. Okay. Is there a, will a member please move the resolution? Resolution on item 11 has been moved and seconded. May we have the reports of the committees that considered this? Kimberly Blank with the report of our Education Committee.
Good evening. Your Education Committee met on Monday, October 16th. Peter Scher, Chairman of the Board of Education, and Dr. Jill Gilde, Superintendent, presented item 11 and answered questions from members of the committee. Steve Walco and Claire Gilgallen of the New Lebanon Building Committee also answered committee questions. In addition, our meeting was attended by New Lebanon's Principal, Barbara Riccio, as well as individual members of the BET and BOE who helped respond to questions as able. Mr. Scher explained that the Board of Ed has done all that it can do to get this project approved for state funding. It is currently approved by the state as qualifying for reimbursement under the Diversity Grant statute. It has been included with a package of all other approved school projects in recent proposed state budgets and has the highest priority ranking. But there is uncertainty surrounding the funding because Connecticut has not yet passed a state budget. Governor Malloy has publicly expressed opposition to state funds for this project, although without a line item veto, it is unclear how he could legitimately prevent funding from going through. Dr. Gilde stated that the new building was right-sized as either a magnet school or a neighborhood school. She said that she didn't believe that it would be prudent for the district to build a two-section school, meaning two classes per grade, because this would limit its ability for future growth. The new building is designed as a three-section school, including three classrooms for pre-K. The guaranteed pricing of the construction contracts will expire in late November before the RTM meets again. Mr. Walco said that if this occurs, it will take a minimum of $60,000 and six weeks to rebid the contracts. In addition, while labor costs may not have changed significantly, materials costs have gone up, and many bids would likely be higher than our current pricing. He also said there may be additional costs associated with delay because site work would have to be done in the winter. Members' questions included the following. What would be the cost of letting the bids expire? What would be the time delay if funds weren't released immediately? Would the Board of Ed build a different-sized school if New Lebanon wasn't a magnet school to satisfy racial balancing requirements? Would voting to release funds immediately have a negative effect on the town's ability to ultimately receive state reimbursement? The committee also discussed the timing of this request and whether or not it was necessary to vote on it at the October meeting. We first voted on a motion to postpone this item until November 20th and called for a special meeting of the RTM on that date. This date was chosen to allow more time to see if the state could pass a budget. The assumption was that if the RTM met on November 20th, the BET could meet the next day and release funds in time for the building committee to keep its current contracts. This motion to postpone failed 5-6-0 with District 10 absent. Districts 1, 7, 8, 11, and 12 voted to postpone. Districts 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and 9 voted not to postpone. We then voted on the item as presented. This item passed 9-2-0 with District 10 absent. Districts 7 and 11 voted no on that item. Their reasoning was they felt by voting to approve release of the funds now, we might be jeopardizing our state legislative delegation's ability to advocate for reimbursement for this project in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Warner with the report of our Finance Committee.
Good evening, fellow members. Your Finance Committee had a free-for-all joint meeting with Land Use. And I'm going to try and not repeat what you've already heard, but present the information that went back and forth during two meetings. One is a joint meeting, and then separately, the Finance Committee met in the lower lounge with a large contingent of BET individuals, people from the school board. We had the experts we needed on hand to answer many of the questions. In the joint meeting, we heard from Mr. Scher, who just reiterated what we know, that we need an answer before November 24th. We did receive an extension until that time. After that, you're talking about rebidding this project, and the cost is unknown, and it throws everything into a cocked hat, so we don't know what to expect. Further, Mr. Walco told us that construction costs go up by about 4% a year, and this could cost something. It wouldn't be a big number, but there would be a cost to delaying this project. The question was asked, did the Board of Education meet all the conditions of the BET? And it was a subtle answer. The answer was technically yes, but because there was no state budget, you couldn't say that they were- that they were -- they were met, these conditions. So we -- you have to assume, as we all do, that the conditions, at least although the State Department of Administration approved these, they don't have a budget yet. So as a technical matter, they weren't approved. A couple of issues were raised that are worth mentioning because I think it clears the air on what we know and what we don't know. One member speculated that should we release the funds, would not that encourage the state not to support the funding, the bond resolution that supports this school? And we heard from Ms. Oberlander that Greenwich qualified not on the basis of need, but on the basis of racial balance. That's why the school administration at the state supported this matter. Would it satisfy the racial imbalance issue? We don't know. What came to us was, we just don't know the answer. It might, it might not. The state administration believes it will, and that's why they supported and included in the bond package the funding for this item. So we have a fair amount of unanswered questions. And two items came up before us for a vote, and they're a little bit contradictory, so it's worth mentioning them. One is, after a full discussion, a motion was made to postpone item 11 until the December meeting. The vote to postpone was passed 6-3-0, with districts 2, 8, and 9 absent. Subsequent to that, a member requested that we vote on the item as it's presented. And oddly, the vote as it was -- to vote on the item as it was presented was voted in favor, 5-4-0. So while we had one vote where the majority voted to postpone, we had another vote where the majority voted for the item. I won't try -- you can infer from that what you will. I don't know what to make of it. So that's the report of the finance committee.
Thank you. Before we get our next report, let's release the harbor management commission. I have the result of the vote on item 10, which was approval of the harbor management plan. Those in favor, 179; opposed, 4; abstaining, 0. That item has carried. All right. Peter Berg with the report of our land use committee on item 11.
Good evening again. So land use did meet jointly with the finance committee last Monday night. I won't repeat what Mr. Warner just said. One of the questions we raised had to do with questioning a report that the Board of Ed had commissioned from a firm called Statistical Forecasting LLC. That report is at variance with a study that's just -- that was released recently by the Connecticut State Data Center, which projects Greenwich population will decline steadily from 2015 through the year 2040. Mr. Lash from the BET pointed out that there's a disclaimer on that study that says it should not be used for public school enrollment projections. Dr. Gilde acknowledged that the Board of Ed's study is erroneous and that a corrected report has been received but has not been released. She promised to forward it -- to forward the corrected report after further review. Mr. Berg, that's me, asked Dr. Gilde about capacity reports published by the Board of Education showing capacity at 82 percent with 937 surplus seats in our elementary schools townwide. Dr. Gilde responded that there are only two elementary school classrooms that are unused So with that, we went back to the cone room and discussed the matter. We took a vote, but it's been pointed out, as chairman, I should have taken -- this item has -- was not referred to land use. As the chair, I should have taken a vote for the committee to take it up. I meant to, but I forgot to. So therefore, our vote was not in legal order. So I will not be reporting that.
Thank you. Lucia Jansen, Chair of our Budget Overview Committee.
Good evening. As we know, this has been a fluid environment, and the BOC is the first committee to meet in regards to call items. The night that the BOC met, Steve Walco had only received the information that 21 of the 27 contractors had received word that they would hold their pricing, and so some contractors remained. We have taken two votes with this particular call item. I will relay the most recent one, which is the one we took up tonight. To postpone item number 11, we used what we understand will be the language from District 2, the postponement of New Lebanon to a special meeting date of November 20th, or to such other date prior to November 24th at the Central Middle School or other venue is open to host the RTM meeting. The significance of a date prior to November 24th is that November 24th is the expiration date of the contractor's guaranteed maximum price. The BOC vote was 9-1-0, with two districts absent, District 1 and 10. We also took up prior to knowing that all the contractors would hold their price, the call item as is. And that vote was 1-9-1, with two -- District 2 absent. District 4 voted in favor, since he did not want to see a delay. And District 12 abstained due to the misinformation he felt expressed by the Board of Ed. Just a couple of points that were made by the committee that persuaded us for the delay is if the town begins the $37.5 million construction project before receipt of the $23 million state grant, it will give Governor Malloy leverage with his multiple times repeated refrain over the last 10 months that a wealthy town like Greenwich can easily afford the project without receiving the state grant. The BOC also felt any construction overage cost, mentioned at 2% to 5% due to the delay in starting the project later, was not sufficient reason to jeopardize the state grant approval or even reason to later cut the project altogether. BOC members discussed concern that other town capital projects may be delayed due to the $23 million unanticipated town contribution for the New Lebanon project. The BET gave no indication to the Board of Ed or RTM which of the future capital projects may be delayed or downsized. BOC members noted that the Board of Ed has not recovered some or all of the grant money for projects justified in part with grant funding such as Hamilton, Glenville, and Misa. We had BOC members who expressed disappointment that the Board of Ed had not developed a Plan B, given the governor's repeated remarks over the past year that the state grant should be denied. BOC members mentioned that a very important trust will be broken between the RTM and the BET if the BET waives the $23 million condition. That was the basis for many RTM members' original approval of the project. And with that, that was the BOC vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Warner? Okay. All right. That brings us to discussion on item 11. We do have a three-minute limit in effect. I will note, I counted 19 speakers in favor of -- oh, I'm sorry. Well, we're going to have to take up the motions to postpone first. But note that there are many interested speakers. I counted 19 in favor, but then I saw Mike Warner's name was here twice, so I guess that brings us to 18. All right. We'll begin with Doug Wells, who is offering a motion to postpone this item on behalf of District 2.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, District 2 moves to postpone item 11 to a special meeting of the RTM on November 20th, 2017, or to such other date prior to November 22 that the Central Middle School or other facility is vacant to host a special meeting. Our vote at our District 2 meeting was 11 in favor of this with one opposition. 11-1. Two delegates absent.
All right. That motion being offered on behalf of a district does not require a second and is currently before us. So this is a motion to postpone item 11 to November 20. Is that correct?
Or to such other date if the 20th is not available at this site.
This is available.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Discussion on that motion postponed. Mr. Wells?
So you heard many of the reasons from Lucia Jansen that we also discussed at our district meeting. The only thing I will add, as far as our district is concerned, is that many of the people who voted in favor of this before did so with the expectation that we were going to get state funding. Given the situation with our budget, most of the members of our district would not vote for this favorably without there being a certainty of state funding. And so we're hopeful that come November, if we have that certainty, since we've already passed this item, and if the funding is in place, I don't think we'd even have to go forward with a special meeting at that point, since it's already been -- it's already been passed with the state funding. The matter could be withdrawn at that point, and we could go ahead with the project.
That's correct. All right. Discussion on this -- further discussion. Mr. Berg, District 8.
So I'm a big supporter of public education. My wife is a public school teacher. But I support this motion to postpone because despite my considerable efforts to obtain factual answers to many questions about this project, I have not gotten good answers. Most recently, on October 10, the Land Use Committee and the Finance Committee wrote to the Town Planner and to the Board of Education. We asked about population projections, enrollment projections, school building capacity and utilization, and alternative solutions to the dual problems of racial imbalance and overcrowding at New Lebanon school. And we have yet to receive answers. We are all volunteers. We are all elected officials of the town. We need to be given the facts on a timely basis so that we can make informed decisions. I cannot vote for a project in the absence of facts. And I would add that it's not helpful to receive false or misleading or evasive answers. One of my concerns from the beginning is that building too much excess capacity--
All right. Mr. Berg, I'm going to call you to order. If you want to present what you believe are the true facts, you may do that, but you may not characterize people as making false statements.
So for example, one statement that has been repeated is that everyone wants neighborhood schools. According to the Board of Ed's own research, 93 percent of Riverside Public School parents definitely prefer neighborhood schools. 90 percent of Old Greenwich parents prefer neighborhood schools. But only 48 percent of New Leb parents and 40 percent of Hamath parents said they definitely prefer neighborhood school. 18 percent of New Leb parents said they prefer to have their child attend a school of their choosing outside of their neighborhood. And consider, over 30 percent of the school-aged children in Greenwich attend private schools, many of them far from their neighborhoods. I could give you four more examples of statements that have been made repeatedly--
You're speaking on the motion to postpone, correct?
So I support the motion. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. McKnight, you want to speak on the motion postponed? Bob McKnight, Chair of District 4.
Good evening. I have two presentations tonight. I hope to get the -- present my second one, asking for release of the funds. But as to postponement, this project has been vetted, studied, discussed, and approved by all stakeholders. The selectment granted by the MI, the project has satisfied our land use agencies. It has met technically, as you said, the benchmarks set by the BET, and it is shovel-ready. I urge you to vote no on postponing a sense of the meeting, asking the BET to release our funds. Send the children of Byram into their new school a year from this December. This project is embarrassingly overdue. Thank you.
Susan Fay, did you want to speak? I'm sorry. Oh, that's not Susan Fay. Sorry. All right. Rob Pirelli Minetti, District 12.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would urge you to support the motion to postpone. The reason that we're here today is because the state doesn't have a budget yet, and because the governor and the legislature can't agree. Now, we're probably going to get a budget in the next month or so. And once that budget is in place, then the Bonding Commission can put together the bonding resolution, and then that can be passed. But until that bonding resolution is passed, there's no state appropriation that we can be certain will provide the funds for reimbursement. We don't know. And that -- it's a matter of uncertainty. And even if you only thought there was a 20 percent chance that we wouldn't get the state money, the expected value of that 20 percent chance is about $5 million, a little over 4.7 million. So there's a real concern. The cost -- the increased costs of a slight delay until we find out what's -- whether or not we're going to get state money is a lot lower than the expected value of the loss of state money. And I would point out one other thing that several people have said that, from the BET and others, have said that, well, we can find the money. There's no such thing as a free lunch. If we don't get $23 or $27 million of reimbursement from the state, that's $23 or $27 million that we're going to have to raise through our taxes. And we're either going to -- going to raise taxes more or fail to fund other projects in a timely manner. So this is really about whether you want to take the risk that the governor, who's very hostile to Greenwich, is going to figure out a way to cut the money out if we show now that we're willing to spend it anyway, or whether we want to simply wait a few more weeks until we find out whether the state budget is enacted or not. Remember, we want to give our legislators in Greenwich the strongest position possible in their negotiations to make sure that that money stays in the budget. And leaving the condition in place puts them in a stronger position than if there's been an RTM vote to say, yeah, we'll pay for it anyway. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan Osmier, District 5.
Thank you. I'm up here to support the postponement. I'm going to just deal with one specific issue, and actually, Rob alluded to it a little bit. But it was interesting to me to hear over the last week, a lot of articles written and discussion that if, even if we didn't get the $23 million from the state, that it wasn't going to impact taxes, taxes wouldn't be increased. And, you know, I was pretty puzzled when I heard that. And I started thinking through, well, how -- you know, no one would say that if there wasn't some basis to say that. But in the end, I agree with Rob, in the end, cash is fungible. And that $23 million will have to come from someplace. And I just wanted to go through how I think people are justifying, saying the taxes won't increase, but realistically, it'll still mean we're going to have to come up with that $23 million. There's a few pieces of it. One is-- One is last year, if you recall, we kept taxes higher than we needed to for last year because we prudently wanted to develop a reserve fund in the general fund to address the fact we might get hit with 10 million of state pension costs, state teachers' pension costs. The rainy day fund in Greenwich increased by 11 million dollars over the last year. That's good news, it gives us flexibility. But it also means that last year, our taxes were significantly higher than they needed to be to prepare for a potential crisis from the state. You know, if we use that money for New Lebanon, you know, that might be the right thing in some people's mind, that ultimately means we won't be having that money in case the state hits us with pension costs, or, you know, the economy goes into a downturn, et cetera. The second thing is this discussion about we could move around other projects. I think we've all seen this long enough to know that people can talk about moving around other projects, but at the end of the day, it's quite unlikely they're actually going to identify them. So I looked at the CIP over the next five years, and if you look at the list, there's a few what could be called somewhat discretionary items, this is away from maintenance and things like that. It's 13 million for the Eastern Civic Center, 7 million for the Dorothy Hamill Rink, 5 million for the Greenwich High School Field, and I think 5 million for Turf Fields. Now, I'm not here to say that those things are more important than a school, that's really ultimately a different question.
Thirty seconds.
But, thank you. But I think the point is that, you know, everyone talks about moving around projects, but if we fund this without getting the 23 million from the state, it is by definition going to mean we're going to have to cancel 23 million of other projects, or we're going to have taxes that are 23 million higher than they would have been. So I just think it's important that people kind of understand how those pieces work together. Thank you.
Thank you. Lucy Krasner, District Five.
At our district meeting last Thursday, District Five voted 10 to 4 in favor of a postponement to December unless there was a November meeting suggested.
My name is Shannon Bocino, I am a resident of Byram, and I have children that attend the New Lebanon School. I am here before you in opposition of postponing this vote. Our delegation, led by Senator Scott France, will continue to fight for this project as they have been doing since its inception. Recently, it was rumored that Representative Florin and Senator France were encouraging the RTM and the BET to wait on the release of the funds as it would give the governor the perception that Greenwich does not need the money. Representative Florin sent the following email to all members in response to this rumor. "It has come to my attention that people are saying that I have opined that the diversity grant for New Lebanon would be jeopardized if the town decided to fund the new school before the reimbursement grant was in hand. I have never, ever said that, and have no way of even judging if it could possibly be a remotely true outcome. Talk about fake news. The delegation has done everything in its power to keep this project on the school construction list and in the bond bill. They will continue to fight, I'm sorry, they will continue to fight to ensure that it receives the full reimbursement per the state statute and the state mandate."[826.44][826.44](APPLAUSE).
Drew Marzillo, our Selectmen.
Mr. Moderator, members' guest, it probably comes without surprise that I rise tonight to speak in favor of releasing funding for the New Lebanon School project and very much against postponing. I do so for many, many reasons. Much have been talked about tonight and debated over the months, and actually, years. Mr. Lash, the Finance Board's Budget Chair, in a factual, well-written recent op-ed outlined in detail financials that will make it possible to pay for a new school independent of state funding for now, that will not result in an increase to the mill rate. That's not to say Mr. Lash and others, including me, believe monies from Hartford owed to us in good faith should now not be awarded, just the opposite. Whether or not you agree with Governor Malloy's stance on education cost-sharing and the funding of certain capital projects, the monies allocated in this year's state budget for New Leb and a racial balance plan has already been approved and agreed upon. And I, for one, will continue to lobby the governor, call his office like I've been doing for months, until such is hopefully released. I have no idea, just like anyone here tonight, if state funding will come to fruition, but I do know with certainty, a new school called New Lebanon needs to be built now, not next week, not next year, not next month, but now. The Building Committee, which I'm a member of, chaired by Steve Walco, waits eagerly for a green light from the BET. This project is shovel-ready, on budget, supported by the BOE and PTAs throughout Greenwich. When we get the okay, this long overdue project, and the process of getting these kids that are so deserving into a facility that the entire town can be proud of, can begin. A brand-new, state-of-the-art educational facility is good and beneficial for all of Greenwich. I have said this multiple times in the past in regards to a fire station back country, that a fire station back country is good, yes, back country, but also for all of Greenwich, just like a school in Byram benefits all of Greenwich. If this project is delayed, it will result in increased costs, and more importantly, it will result in months, if not years, of delaying its opening. How long do we, as a town, want our kids in substandard conditions? Or even worse, if this project is stopped, I then ask a simple question, then what? What are the alternatives? Renovation? We all know that this will result in millions of extra dollars at a less reimbursement rate. And some would argue that it's impractical, and the entire MI process will have to be reinstated, resulting in more delays. Do we downsize the BOE? The majority of its members believe that this remains exactly the right size to meet its needs.
Thirty seconds.
Projections support such with added availability of pre-K. Solving this longstanding racial imbalance problem will not be easy. Some would say it may be impossible to solve, given the fact that we are a large town with 61,000. However, with a brand-new school, with fabulous teachers, a new pool, a vibrant commercial and residential village, some of the most expensive real estate in town are in Byram's, and some affordable homes with families that can raise their children in Byram, what Greenwich? So I will close by respectfully asking that you vote in favor of releasing the funding tonight, and vote not in favor of delay, please, no more delays, thank you.
John Dolan, District Seven.
So it strikes me that there are some very well-meaning people who have spoken, but they're not speaking on the motion at hand. The motion at hand is to postpone until November, not whether we should have the school or not, not, you know, whether the kids deserve the school. In terms of a postponement to November, no one has argued that the costs are, the financial costs are going to increase. We understand that it might push the construction back five or six weeks because you're building in the winter, but no one has made the point that financial costs will rise if we postpone until November. Many other points about costs have been made, but on the motion at hand, no one has made that case. Now, I would advise that politics can be about cooperation or confrontation, all right? There are a lot of people who want this school to go through, and I sympathize with you, and it is my fervent hope that the state comes through with the money. So I understand where you're coming from. But there is a vast majority of RTM members who only voted to support this because they expected money to be coming from the state. What we're asking for, as I would argue that you support the motion to postpone, is a month, a near costless month to postpone, and that you cooperate with those members who came to this motion only because of this support from the state. Time will solve this issue, please vote to postpone a month.[1121.08][1121.08](APPLAUSE).
All right, I've got a spotlight in my eyes here, so who's our next speaker? Mr. Carter, are you interested?
Yes.
Michael Carter, District Six.
I ask that you vote not to postpone. I think it's important to move ahead on the project. Malloy could just as easily make an argument that if we turn this down, we're not really serious about it, and so we shouldn't get the money. The state could take months to get around to doing it, they may not even do it this year. If you look at the list of schools, it's hundreds of millions. They may say, okay, in this budget, we'll do some of them this year, some of them next year. Remember, we have to build the school first before we get a reimbursement. We have already approved the funding in the bond to build the school. So let's move ahead, the state will eventually give us the money.[1190.08][1190.08](APPLAUSE).
Arlene Lamazo, cut right in front there, I like that.
There was something said that I think is incorrect, and I'm going to piggyback on what Mike just said. You've been told that the state has not reimbursed us for certain projects, school projects, that have been done years ago. And that's true, but that's been true for decades, that's the way the state works. The town puts up the money upfront, we approve it, we appropriate it, we spend it. When it's all done, then they start, I don't know how to say this, trickling out the money. They don't give it to an alum sum, but they trickle it out, and yes, you have to wait for it. But that is not uncommon, that's actually the way things work. And I've worked with Public Works for 30 years on projects that get state funding, so I know for a fact that that's the way it works, I just want you to know that, thank you, please.
This would be the RTM setting a special meeting date of November 20th, and then we will determine what is on the call. Anything else of an emergency nature comes up, we would include that. All right, Mr. Daudakis has moved the previous question, it has been seconded. Motion for the previous question is a motion to cut off debate, it is not itself debatable and requires a two-thirds majority to pass. All those in favor of immediately proceeding to vote on the motion to postpone Item 11 to November 20, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
All right, will the district, I'm going to take a recorded vote on this, will the district chairs, please mark your voting cards. District Two, motion to postpone Item 11 to November 20 or such other available date. We have the result of the vote on the District 2 motion to postpone 11 to November 20. Those in favor, 107. Opposed, 76. Abstaining, 1. That item is carried. All right. So just be on the alert for notice of the meeting. We'll try and schedule it here. The Chair of the Board of Ed has assured us that there will be some facility that can be made available for us. Mr. Tuthill. Yes. This will just, we'll prepare a call now for November 20th. And it'll go out, you know, it'll go out in the regular course, three and a half. Ms., I can't hear you, Mr. Tuthill. All right. Item 12 now comes before us. May we have the resolution on that item? This is an appointment from the Board of Selectmen. Item 12. Cynthia Smith.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen of the RTM, Item Number 12, resolve that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed a alternate member of the Historic District Commission for a term expiring 3/31/19. Cynthia Smith.
Thank you. Will members please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on Item 12 has been moved and seconded. John Eddy with the report of our Appointments Committee.
Mr. Moderator, the Appointments Committee voted to postpone this item, so I'd like to make a motion to postpone it until the next meeting.
To, well, to the December meeting?
Either one.
What?
Either one, I think. We weren't specific, so we could propose it, we could postpone it till December, or we could postpone it until November.
It's up to you. You tell me.
December.
December.
Yeah, let's do December. Yeah, thank you.
All right. That being offered on behalf of our Appointments Committee, it does not require, does not require a sec, all right, I'm sorry. Mr. Berg, you want to give us a report first?
No.
No.
We did interview her, but we will wait to give our report.
All right. All those in favor postponing Item 12 to the December meeting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion has carried. Item 13 now comes before us. Peter Tessie, our First Selectman.
Item Number 13, resolve that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed a member of the Board of Parks and Recreation for a term expiring 3/31/18. Kirk Schubert.
Thank you. Will members please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on Item 13 has been moved and seconded. Mr. Eddy?
The Appointments Committee also voted to postpone this to December.
Thank you. All right. That is currently before us. All those in favor of postponing Item 13 to our December meeting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion has carried. All right. That brings us to the final item before us tonight, Item 15. Peter Tessie, our First Selectman.
Item Number 15, whereas the town entered into a management agreement with the Bruce Museum, Inc., BMI, on January 31, 1992, which designated and appointed BMI to supervise, operate, and manage the museum and administer its affairs, whereas said management agreement was amended on November 2, 2016, in the balance as it appears on the call.
Thank you. Will members please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on Item 15 has been moved and seconded. Doug Wells, Chair of our Legislative and Rules Committee.
We took up this item last Monday evening. We had Suzanne, Leo, Bob Lawrence, and Peter Sutton, all of the Bruce Museum, Beth Crumick of the BET, to help us, and also Wayne Fox from Law Department was there to answer our questions and to go through the Second Amendment to the agreement. The BET Law Committee approved the Second Amendment in concept. That is similar to what they had done the last time this agreement was before the RTM. The full BET was not involved because there is no financing or funding coming from the town in this matter. There was some discussion about whether or not it was correct to consider the Second Amendment when the final version was not made available to all committee members. The Second Amendment had been included in an online attachment on the town website. A version prior to the final version had been posted on the website at first, but after finding out that it was incorrect, a later version was posted, and this was the one that we worked on after Mr. Fox explained the changes to the Second Amendment that are designed to provide the town with more protections. There followed a discussion regarding whether the town would be obligated to bear any of the costs of the new projects and what would happen if the project was not completed. Mr. Fox pointed out there is additional language in the Second Amendment provision which lays out a procedure whereby the construction would go in phases, and each phase would be dependent upon the Bruce Museum raising the money and getting them to follow through with their pledges to actually donate the money before each section is, each phase is constructed. The museum has negotiated a guaranteed maximum price for the, from the contractor, and these work phases would not begin before the museum had either obtained cash or enforceable pledges for each phase of the work. Mr. Fox thought that the Second Amendment as now drafted is in legal order. Our committee took two votes on the item, one as to legal order, one as to the merits. On legal order, it was eight in favor, one opposed, with one abstention. Districts 1 and 9 were absent. District 6 abstained on the ground that he thought that the item should not have been considered when some committee members had not received a current version of the Second Amendment. District 7 voted no because the Second Amendment as drafted doesn't minimize the risk to the town that the museum could run out of money during construction, thus leaving the town with no practical alternative but to finish the project. Our vote on the merits was nine in favor, none opposed, with one abstention. District 7 abstained. The vote, oh, and District 7 abstained presumably for the same reason. Thank you.
Thank you. Kim Blank, Vice Chair of our Education Committee.
Suzanne Leo, Managing Director of the Bruce Museum, and Peter Sutton, Executive Director of the Bruce Museum, presented this item to us, approval of a Second Amendment to BMI's management agreement with the Town of Greenwich. This amendment changes the definition of plans to include the planned addition to the museum as approved at our September meeting. It also clarifies parking procedures and maintenance obligations between the town and BMI. The committee's questions focused primarily on the Bruce's ability to finance construction of the addition and to finance the additional ongoing increase in operation, operating costs. The Bruce stated that it guaranteed to the town that it would not commence any phase of construction before that phase was fully funded. There is a clause in the amended agreement that states that the town controller has to approve before any phase of construction can begin. The committee also expressed concern about the Bruce's ability to fund an estimated $2 million increase in annual operating costs. While the Bruce has stated it planned to fundraise to increase its endowment by $15 million, the committee noted that this would generate only $600,000 to $750,000 per year, assuming a 4% to 5% draw. The committee asked how the Bruce planned to generate the additional 1 1/4 to $1.4 million annually. Ms. Leo responded that the Bruce had hired consultants to develop pro forma estimates of how they could increase operating income after their expansion. These included increased income from a cafe, room rentals, and increases in admissions and membership. She provided these details to the committee via email following our meeting. We voted to approve this item 11-0-0 with District 10 absent.
Thank you. Mr. Tuthill, could you see if there are any speaker lists that were, had names on them? Thank you. Mike Warner, Chair of our Finance Committee.
Good evening, fellow members. The Finance Committee took this, took Item 15. We had with us Suzanne Lowe and Bob Lawrence from the Bruce Museum to answer questions. You've heard most of the pertinent facts previously, that they have phased fundraising, and they have a history of very strong financial backing by their supporters in the town. I, without further, without a great deal of questions, we took a vote, and the committee voted 8-0-1 in favor with Districts 2, 8, and 9 absent. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion on Item 15. Oh, I'm sorry, Lucia Jansen, Chair of our Budget Overview Committee.
Good evening. The BOC took up this item. And again, we're the first committee to meet on the call, so information comes in later as committees meet and districts meet. So we took up the item to postpone the item due to some information that was lacking, which that vote was 11-0-0 to postpone. However, as time passed, the information was shared, and so therefore, we have amended our motion to tighten up the language. So you've talked about the phases of construction. It is inside documents, the description of the phases. So we have suggested with this motion to incorporate the phases of construction. There are three. And the other portion is, the description of sufficient funds per phase is not descriptive of what does that mean. And so we wanted to tighten up those two areas, and then we would be prepared to vote on the item as is tonight. And that vote was 10-0-0. District 2 was absent. 1 and 10 were the two absent. And may I make a request for either the First Selectman or the Town Attorney to comment to the two items, the two areas that we would like to incorporate in the amendment?
All right. So you have language that you want inserted in this amendment?
Yes. The new motion requests the Second Amendment Management Agreement incorporate two additions, that all phases of the Bruce Management Project from Phase 1A to 3 be included, and two, clarifying language that each phase is fully funded prior to commencement of each phase. And it's a little bit ambiguous at the moment. What does "fully funded" mean? Does it mean that 75% of the funds are there, or is it 100%? Because in some meetings, it was 75% mentioned.
All right. I'm not sure I understand what you're proposing. Do you have?
I have a question to the...
No, 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 but I want to...
Before I make...
You have a question through me to anybody, so I've got to understand your question.
Okay.
All right. And I don't understand your question. Did your committee approve specific language to be inserted in this proposed amendment?
I just read it. That was the specific language.
Now, have you presented that to the people that you want to comment on it before, just now?
Yes. It doesn't sound like it, but I did.
When? When?
Tonight. The BOC took this up tonight, once again. We originally took it up two weeks ago.
The Town Attorney is indicating he is not aware of what you're talking about.
Well, this was, it was an email sent earlier today, and...
At what time?
6:00 in the morning. And then it was replied to, and replied again, and replied again throughout the day.
Repplied to by whom?
Pete Minarsky, Leslie Targington, Peter Tessie. We have various people on the chain.
Mr. Tessie, do you have, would you care to comment?
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, and ladies and gentlemen of the RTM. The correspondence that is referenced, I received forwarded from Mr. Branyan at 2:43 today. The topics, as was presented by the Chair of the BOC, are in fact contained within the original transmission which went to Mr. Minarsky and Mr. Branyan at 6:16. On the substance, I think the Board of Selectmen took up the changes that are before you and made our best judgment as to providing the town the greatest degree of security in our minds, working in collaboration with the BET. Clearly, it's in the RTM's purview to further tighten that, if that's your prerogative. In that regard, I think it would be incumbent upon the Bruce to be able to affirm that's something that they can live with. We ourselves were very comfortable with the changes we made in reducing liability and exposure to the town, both environmentally, financially, and through construction. But if things are required to give greater comfort to the RTM, I'll speak for myself. If the museum supports that, then I am fine with it.
All right. Ms. Jansen, I have a question for you. Do you have something in writing that I can look at?
In my own handwriting, yes. I do have the email chain through Mr. Tessie.
All right. But your committee voted on something tonight which is subsequent to this. What was the language of the motion that the committee voted on? What I'm hearing is, you're saying your committee desires that language be added to tighten something up. Is that, is that correct?
Correct.
But you don't have the language that you want.
We do. It's a descrip, it really is rather simple, the additions. It's the description of all the phases of the Bruce Museum project, starting from Phase 1A through 3. That's one addition.
I'm sorry. Mr. Eddy?
Yes?
For what purpose do you rise?
Point of procedure, I believe.
I don't know what that is. You have a point of order?
A point of order, I guess.
That, that point of order is that there is currently a violation of rules occurring. Right now, Ms. Jansen has the floor, so you can, you can interrupt if there's a violation of our rules.
I believe there is.
What is it?
Is that if the BOC voted today on this issue, then they did not do that vote at a meeting that's in conformity with the freedom of information.
Oh, I'm assuming they legally noticed this. Is that, is that true?
We did legally notice, but Mr. Eddy might be right. We added this to our agenda to, because of the clarifying language that came in by today. So in fact, we couldn't, we could stay with our original motion, which that motion was to defer this until December, to have the language that we just described tightened up in the Second Amendment.
All right. So let's clear, let's take things one at a time.
Okay.
I thought you were offering a motion to amend on behalf of your committee that was adopted at a legally noticed meeting. Is that correct?
No.
All right.
Apparently not.
So that solves that problem.
I am going to go with Mr. Eddy, who has highlighted, and that is... The meeting was noticed. It didn't include this particular agenda item because it came in at late time.
Okay. So it was a special meeting. At special meetings, the only matters that can be taken up are agenda, are items listed on the agenda, unlike regular meetings where you can take a two-thirds vote to take up something not on the agenda.
Okay.
All right. So, Mr. Fox has had a correct statement. Yes. So, so we don't have a committee motion. Are you making a motion individually?
We do have a committee motion that was originally made. This was a second motion made. We have two motions.
But you can make a motion as an individual, not on behalf of the committee. That's what I'm saying.
Oh, okay. Good Lord. All right. Let's start over. I will make an individual motion to amend the Second Amendment Management Agreement to include a description of the phases of the project from 1A to 3. The second addition will be a description of what level of funding is needed per phase that the town comptroller will be approving. That's it.
So, so that's, that's a, a desire, so if we were to, if I were to accept this...
Yes.
And we were to adopt it...
Yes.
You don't have specific language, as I understand it, and I'll ask our Town Attorney for his understanding. All that we are doing is essentially expressing a desire that something else be included in this language, but we're not specifying what, other than your general... in this language, but we're not specifying what, other than your general categories, which we would then leave to the discretion of the negotiators on behalf of the town.
Yes. And I will go with your recommendation. If you think this makes more sense to come back in December...
Yeah.
Okay. Then, December it is. But the intent are only those two areas. So, I leave it to your good judgment. So... I'm good with either way. I mean, seriously, you hear...
You understand, if you just went off her motion to postpone, it could be defeated, and then we'll go forward tonight. Or, so I'm going to leave, I mean, it's up to you. Which way would you like to go? I'm just saying, if, if Mr., I'm going to ask our Town Attorney if he believes this is in legal order, this is a proper motion to amend, because it doesn't have language that we are adopting. And so, so those who then are responsible for signing, we are authorizing the town to enter into this agreement...
Yes.
That, you know, essentially isn't specified.
Okay. This is, Mr. Moderator, there was a specific email that was sent by me this morning to have the, the right representatives, and in that included the Town Attorney, and it grew to Mr. Bruce Cohen, in order to comply with what the town wanted. And then, there was a question by the BET Law Committee Chair, saying, "If we don't have the language and time for the evening, what do you propose to do?" That response did not come back. However, from the First Selectmen, you did hear that the language could be okay. The question is, what is the language? And your point is well taken, that...
Postponer?
No. I don't know.
All right. So what do you want to do? And by the way, a motion to postpone doesn't solve any of these problems, because no one's working on it. It just brings it back exactly as it is today.
Right. So motion to refer is the way to, as an individual, it would be modified, is a motion to refer to the Town Attorney to incorporate the language. And I'm going to cede the floor to the next person, if possible, by your agreement...
Thank you.
To the next person.
All right. So you're finished?
I am. Thank you.
All right.
I'm postponing. I am, I'm just giving...
All right. Thank you. John Dolan, District Seven.
Let me see if I can offer a way out of here. So, District Seven voted at its meeting, its normally scheduled meeting, 12:00, for a motion to refer item fifteen to the December RTM meeting, to a joint subcommittee of the members of Public Works and LNR, as formed by the Chairs of those two committees. So, specific committee, specific date. And the charge to that subcommittee would be to modify the language of the amendment to, among other things, address the issues raised by Lucia Jansen, but also to give the town more comfort, that it won't find itself in a position to finish a half-filled building, should the Bruce not be able to find the funds. Hey, we all lived through 2007, '08, who knows? And two, to give the appropriate town entities more oversight on this very large project that, I remind you, is on town property and will be a town-use building. So that would be our motion to refer to December to that entity.
All right. That motion is in order. This is a motion to refer item fifteen to a special committee to be appointed by the Chairs of Legislative and Rules and Finance?
No, Parks, Public Works.
Legislative and...
Public Works and LNR.
Legislative and Rules and Public Works, with a report-back date of December, the December meeting.
In time for the December RTM meeting.
Understanding that that requires to meet the call deadline, which is three and a half weeks in advance of that, which will fall around our special meeting or so.
Better than doing it here tonight on the fly, yes.
Okay. So, that motion is currently before us, having been offered by one of our districts. Discussion on that motion to refer. David, I'm sorry, John Dolan.
So, we clearly have seen evidence in terms of...
Followed by David Detchin.
...discussion about how the current proposed management agreement does not necessarily satisfy all parties. We've heard from participants of the Bruce who've presented, that they are far short of their full target for starting Phase three, so I don't think that this motion to refer to the people who should be making up this decision in any way would delay their, you know, their construction, because they're not ready to start now. They're still not even, I believe, at near half of their goal. And I think it would assuage a lot of concerns within the town, within the RTM, as to whether this agreement includes everything that we'd like to have included upon further reflection.
Thank you. David Detchin?
I'm having a bad case of déjà vu, because I think we had the same kind of discussion about postponement at the last meeting in regard to the municipal improvement. We discussed this issue, precisely this issue, at the District Ten meeting the other night. And what we pointed out to Ms. Leo was that the issue of phase, or phases, was causing confusion. And we said, I mean, the issue of all, the town may in fact have to pay for something that's not fully completed, is a non-issue. It's a, it's a complete red herring. And here's why. Because if you were to consider this motion on its merits tonight, you would hear from Ms. Leo, that there will be no construction commenced on the building until there is full funding. That's their game plan. That's their plan all the way going forward. And basically, we're postponing this in order to get reassurance. I'm concerned about the general tone that we have in town generally anymore, is that we don't trust anybody but the RTM to do their job competently. And that seems to be what our mood of thinking is these days.
All right. Suzanne Leo, do you care to speak on this motion to postpone?
Sure. Everyone else is talking. Why not?
All right. Suzanne Leo, Associate Director of Development of the Bruce Museum.
Actually, I'm Managing Director of the Bruce Museum, but yes. Managing Director of the Bruce Museum, Suzanne Leo. A lot of friends in the audience tonight. Thank you very much for staying so late. There has been some discussion about the language in the management agreement. I would like to point out, first and foremost, that this management agreement was first drafted on May 23rd. It was done so with the Bruce Museum's attorney and the Town Attorney. It was not until sometime in September that the BET Law Committee decided to take up the language in that document and change it. We were, as a result, postponed from providing you with our language for that agreement until such time as language was agreed upon between the BET and the Bruce Museum, and the Town Attorney, and the Board of Selectmen. That was done in September, so we have postponed. I think to postpone again would be really kicking this can down the road and keeping us from moving forward with the project. Thank you.
Further discussion on the motion to postpone. Mr. Pirelli Minetti, District Twelve.
I'll be very brief. I think you should strongly consider the postponement. And the reason is, what we did not get in the package this time was a marked copy of the Second Amendment that showed the differences between what was proposed in September and what was proposed now. You know, some of us may have gone and dug it out, but it was a lot of work. It should be easy. Whenever there are changes in agreements that are provided to the RTM for its approval, you should be seeing a black line from the previous version, so that you can tell exactly what changes were made and what changes weren't made. I would like to see further changes in the agreement. I'd be willing to work to, with the Town Attorneys to make some of those changes, but I think, I mean, I don't think there's anybody who doesn't want to see this project go forward and doesn't want to see it done. People are just concerned that they want to make sure that the town's protected. So I think that, but my biggest beef is that we didn't get a marked copy. And when you don't get a marked copy, it's very difficult to tell the difference and to really look at the language. So I think that we should encourage people to give us marked copies when there are changes. Thank you.
Mr. Tessie, did you want to offer anything? All right. Don Hamilton, District Seven. To be followed by, by the way, this is not a motion postponed, this is a motion to refer.
This is a motion to refer, correct?
Motion to refer.
Right. So, I'd like to speak just a minute, and I'd like to simplify. This is an oversight question. It's not a criticism of the agreement, per se. It's really what the agreement doesn't have that we would like to have incorporated. And I'll make, I'll give you a simple, a couple of simple examples. But let me ask you a quick question. If the proposed BMI expansion were a town-initiated design and build project, of which there have been dozens, if not hundreds, and several very large ones, would you be comfortable that all relevant risk variables have been identified and quantified? Do you know enough about this project to answer that question in the affirmative? So here's the question. Here's the reason that's important. This is a $60 million project. It's a $45 million asset addition. The current building is worth five or $10 million, maybe. The artwork is worth $8 million. This is a major, major expansion. These are town assets. This is a town building. It's town property, town art. We're responsible for all of the fixed costs of maintaining this building, and in addition, the insurance costs of ensuring that the building and its contents are protected. This is what is not in the management agreement. Three categories. Contracts and construction. Change order, resolution, criteria, and funding contingency. Should the oversight body be expanded and develop clear guidelines to Mr. Minarsky for go and no-go decisions, to whoever the oversight committees, I'm fine with the recommended, but it could well be expanded beyond Public Works and LNR. Should the town insist on oversight by employees of DPW with proven expertise in large construction projects? Big ones. They've done this soup to nuts, and there's been no involvement of our own town department at any level. Oversight, suggestion, helping, oh yeah, watch out for this. And this is why it's important. There are three phases to this project. There's really only one phase to the project. That's the construction, addition and construction phase, which is around $40 million. So when we get to that trip point, Minarsky's going to be faced today without any additional information, with a decision point. The bids are out, the bids are accepted, whatever the number is. He's got to match that up against his view of the solidity of the funding matrix. How good is it? What are the conditions? Will the funding hold throughout the life of the project? How long does a project last? Is it five years?
Thirty seconds.
Okay. So, estimated cost of construction by phase, not in the agreement. Renovation phase, that's the fourth phase, not in the agreement. Will there be a single bid encompassing all phases? Not in the agreement. If so, what are the anticipated manager demands for financial coverage? Not in the agreement. Payment terms? Not in the agreement. Okay? That's half of my list. So I've had experience with contracts. I've invested in companies, as a public company investor, that live and die on contracts, fixed contracts, fixed hybrid contracts, cost-plus reimbursable contracts. None of this is spelled out in this management agreement. Nothing.
Thank you. All right. The Chair, Mr. Tessie.
Good evening. I think there's a lot of well-intentioned people here, but if you think about the comments that were just expressed in terms of the town's engagement and involvement with the Bruce, we go from a wonderful example of having a public-private partnership that's worked in this town so well since 1992, whereby the town removed itself from ownership or management of the facility, removing the obligation of employees and so forth, to a description that would essentially put the exposure and liability back to the town by directing town management and finance to begin to oversee the construction of this. To me, it's almost come full circle on what we're trying to achieve, which was to protect the town from exposure and liability. By saying you want all these conditions, what you're doing is bringing the town back in and making us culpable. So I think, be careful what you're trying to do, because ultimately, you're counterproductive. And also, I'd say, let history be our greatest teacher here. The Bruce has performed excellently through our relationship. They've given us no reason to question their excellent track record, and yet, we're treating them, I think, in a way that does not reflect that. So again, I think, let's be careful. We're overthinking this. We have protections in place. The BET Law Committee worked with us, worked with the Town Attorneys. I think it's time to affirm our belief in the Bruce, what it's done for Greenwich, what it will do, and take a positive and affirmative step tonight.
All right. I'd be interested, I'm going to call on Mr. Wells. I do want to note that sometimes we refer to committees on a short timeframe, expecting that, you know, there's no problem meeting those deadlines. And I'll remind you, we referred the fracking ordinance, I believe it was, to a special committee, and it still has not come back. So, and I'm not being critical, I think. These things require work if they're going to be done. So just to think that we can get this back in December, you know, and a lot of work having been done. Mr. Wells, Chair of Legislative and Rules, one of the committees to which this, or one of the individuals who would appoint members of this.
Yes. From the perspective of the referee, first of all, let's just go back for a second and look at the votes of your committees that took this matter up. Education, eleven zero zero. Finance, eight zero one. Legislative and Rules on the merits, nine zero with one abstention. On the, on the legal matters, it was eight one one, with District Seven being the only one that voted against us. So, I think that there are some people that have some concerns here. I believe the vast majority of the people don't have those concerns. We have an entity that has shown an incredible track record of being able to raise vast sums of money to get things done to improve our town facility. I'm confident they're going to do it this time. And to rework this and to try to make something in a document, ensure that this is going to be built, is probably not going to work anyway. Let them go ahead with the project. They'll raise the money, and we're going to have a great facility. I ask you to turn this motion to refer down.
Tessie Fruman. I've been wondering where you were.
I can't let the opportunity pass to tell you once again, we have to reward excellence. The Bruce has done everything in a manner to bring us a facility that's probably world-renowned. Let's reward the excellence, have confidence in them, and vote no on the motion to postpone.
Revert.
Sorry.
All right. Well, all right. I will, in the first instance, call for a voice vote. If we need a recorded vote, I will proceed. So, if you are in favor of referring item fifteen to a special committee to be appointed by Mr. Wells and Arlene Lamazo, you should vote yes when I call the question. If you do not want to do that, you vote no. All those in favor of the motion to refer item fifteen, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That motion has failed. All right. Further discussion now on the item on the call. Suzanne Leo, did you want to be heard? Mr. Dodakis?
I'd like to speak on this.
Okay. Suzanne, Suzanne Leo has the floor now. You, I'll put you on the list.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to move forward again, and thank you so much for staying so late tonight. As you remember, last year, the RTM voted to extend Bruce Museum Inc.'s BMI, management of the museum for an additional 25 years. And we are truly honored to be the stewards of your collection, of your facility, and to provide services to the community of all ages and all abilities. So, thank you for that. We also want to thank you for supporting our request for municipal improvement last month, which has provided your approval for us to really continue and move forward with this expansion project. And clearly, outcomes of both votes really underscore the confidence that you have in the Bruce Museum, and its track record of fiscal responsibility, as well as its ability to continue to serve the community and serve it into the future. So thank you for that. So now, clearly, we're seeking approval for an amendment to that management agreement. The language of this document was modeled on language from the museum's last... The language of this document was modeled on language from the museum's last independently-funded expansion from 1992. It's been written in consultation, as we discussed earlier, with the Board of Selectmen, the town attorney, town department heads, and with input from the Law Committee of the BET. The amendment, of course, is important for several reasons. One, it gives BMI the permission to construct an expansion in accordance with plans that have already been approved by Planning and Zoning Commission, Zoning Board of Appeals, Architectural Review Committee, and many others. It outlines the environmental testing of the site that's already been conducted, and it indicates any and all remediation and disposal work shall be done by licensed contractors and undertaken at the sole cost of BMI. It's of note that the entire footprint of the proposed expansion site has been tested, and any needed remediation costs have already been accounted for in the hard costs of the project. This management agreement also defines roles and responsibilities of BMI and the town with regard to site maintenance. And these responsibilities in this division of labor was derived with input from town department heads to ensure that there's no undue burden to these departments from a staffing or budgetary perspective. Paragraph 5 of the agreement states that BMI shall not undergo the project without appropriate funding. The Bruce Museum's project will require $32 million in hard construction costs. Phases of construction include parking lot expansion, the addition in its entirety, and renovations to the existing museum. BMI cannot and will not undergo any portion of the project without sufficient funding, as evidenced by the town comptroller. So some of you have asked whether or not we can raise the money. The museum has already, just on the promise of this project, without your authority and without your go-ahead, on the promise of this project, has received cash and pledges totaling $23 million. That's $18 million towards construction costs and $5 million towards an increased tour endowment. We are not naive enough to believe that an increase in building size does not mean an increase in operation costs. We understand, and we're preparing for that. We will go from approximately a $5 million operating to $7 million, as was pointed out, I think, by the Education Committee. And we intend on increasing our endowment. We currently have $23 million in endowment. We intend to increase that endowment by $15 million, of which, as I mentioned earlier, $5 million has already been raised. That will give us $38 million, from which we can draw 5% annually, for a total of $1.9 million. The net, of course, I think someone pointed out, was $750. The remaining funds will come from new revenue. We have worked with Marcy Goodwin. She's a museum planner and consultant with over 30 years of experience in this sort of matter, and she has helped us build out a projected budget for when we reopen. These revenues were derived in, with formulas that include increases in attendance, having places where we can actually rent space, and greater numbers of people can attend. And this is what we anticipate. If you can bear with me, I'll go quickly. We intend to raise $330,000 in admissions and membership, $400,000 in fundraising and special events. I remind you, there's going to be a cost savings to our special events for bringing them onsite, where we will now have space for them. We anticipate $360,000 in rentals and special programs, $250,000 from a new cafe and an enlarged store. I want to make special note that these projections include no substantial increase to the funds that BMI receives from the town each year. The projections we used included only a 2% annual increase, which was based on the precedence of past funding that this body has awarded us. So in short, Bruce Museum Inc. is quite proud of our successes to date, both in exhibitions, education, and with the amount that we've been able to raise to date. We're very proud of the 25-year relationship we have with this town. We're asking for an opportunity to expand in order to serve this community better, and we're asking to do it at our sole cost. Thank you.
Thank you. Don Hamilton, did you care to say anything further?
We were out screaming.
Okay. Mr. Diddakis?
Ms. Moderator, I agree with your question.
Just a quick clarification. I'm not, I think it's a tourney project.
If you want to speak, why don't you?
Tourney project, it's a solid management agreement.
Use the microphone.
I will. And my, my point was that there was an enormous amount of information that I think should be provided to all parties of a substantive nature, that in no way denigrates or undervalues the fabulous work of the Bruce and their objectives and their donors, and the plan that's been, all the work that's been done. $32 million is a number that, for example, I've never heard. I've heard $45 million, construction costs, and less four is 41, but, you know, we're just talking eight or nine million, so no, no big deal. But I, I do think, I do think we, we owe ourselves the opportunity to get better educated about the evolution of a donor-supported, a public-private partnership, where we own the assets, but basically have no knowledge of how the assets are gonna be built, over what timeframe, with the cost of the phases, as I said, it's not clear, and, and basically, how those phases are gonna be funded, in a general sense, not in a specific sense, that would be threatening to the donors. So it's an informational, it's an oversight question. It's not one of throwing out the management agreement. It's actually not one of voting no tonight at all. It's just one that we need more information. We need to take a different approach toward this relationship for the long-term health of the town. That's it.
All right, will the district chairs please mark your voting cards, item 15, and proceed to poll your delegation? That being the final business to come before us, we will need to... This is item, we're voting on the, on the merits of item 15. Pardon me? What's your question? There's no motion. This is item 15. Are we going to approve, are we going to approve this amendment to the Bruce? This is item 15. Does everybody understand? The motion, the, the resolution in the call is, has not been amended. We are voting on item 15, that the first selectman is authorized to execute the Second Amendment to the Bruce Museum Management Agreement. All right? If you are in favor of authorizing the first selectman to do that, you vote yes. If you are opposed, you vote no. Thank you. All right, so we will await the tally of this vote before we can proceed to adjourn. We will seat each other on November 20th. Good luck on November 7th. All right, we have the result of the vote on item 15, the Bruce Museum. Those in favor, 128. Opposed, 22. Abstaining, 3. That item has carried. That being the final business to come before the meeting tonight. The meeting stands adjourned.